Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Mayor Jerry Cook. Today we're talking about both the September 6th and the September 20th City Council meetings. Thanks for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
The official first day of fall, actually. We've made it through summer and lots of rain to end our last day of summer.
Huge, huge, yeah. There's lots of rain, lots of flooded streets and lots of things going on.
Yeah, like I said, fortunately if it continued into our first day of fall, this could have been a lot of snow, you know, because fall's here. That means snow will be not too far off.
Yeah, we had, yeah, yeah. The water is stressing people out a little bit.
Yeah.
We lost some, we lost some new curbs that were installed that were washed out and had a car get sunk down in the Evergreen project and, oh, well.
Well, we got off easier than some other parts of Metro.
Yes, we did.
Off to 10 inches of rain, we got about four or five here in Coon Rapids. So fortunately, not a lot of flooding problems here locally. Before we get into our business that we want to talk about, we just had the September 11th anniversary, the 15th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks and again had the big celebration or the big remembrance up on the main street bridge.
Yeah, what a powerful thing and what a great thing for Coon Rapids for us to be able to participate in this. You know, when you're up on that bridge and it was, it was the four corners of the bridge. It was the Coon Rapids fire, it was the Ham Lake fire, Champlin Anoka, and then, and then this year there was a truck that a person out of Woodbury purchased. They were going to purchase and sell it. They buy and sell fire trucks. And then when they bought it, they realized it was a New Jersey truck and they found out it was one of the responding trucks from 9/11. So to have that truck there too that actually responded to that day is very powerful, very powerful.
Yeah, very moving. Again, they did it from setup to send down. Lots of folks, new this year they had a car show out there.
Yeah, the remembrance car show. Lowe's generously gave up a huge piece of their parking lot. And then they also did the remembrance ceremony over there with the tolling of the bell. And it was, it was very moving. It was, they had a lot of the first responders lined up that were using the, presenting the flag and then tolling the bell and it's very nice, very powerful.
All right, so we had that. We also had a police appreciation event that was just held at the American Legion last weekend. Lots of folks turned out for that.
Saturday the 17th, yeah. It went from 2:00 to 11:00 and there was just, there had to be thousands of people because there were hundreds and hundreds of them there all the time. We had multiple things going on, so my wife and I didn't get there till late, but there was still a good crowd there late in the evening. I got there in time. I shared at the council meeting to get a couple of good old Denny Preston stories, you know?
There you go. His daughter helps organize that event.
Oh, Missy does an amazing job putting that on and yeah, it's very well run. And I don't know what they, how much, what they raised in funds, but the awareness that they raised is tremendous. And we really want law enforcement to know that we are behind you and we, and we thank you for what you do.
Yeah, this is the second year they've held it. I believe I saw a figure maybe around 12,000 or so, which is better than last year. I think they raised about $10,000.
Oh, okay, I hadn't seen that.
And it goes to two different police groups, I believe. So well worth it.
And in the afternoon, I was told that Chief Wise and Sheriff Stewart and several others gave some real nice talks and so.
Yeah, I was out there. I missed that part. I had to leave, but at 3:00, when I was out there, they had this big semi. The police escorted it down Northdale Boulevard, came to the Legion and it was, it's basically a remembrance truck. It has all the names of officers who've been killed in the line of duty in Minnesota. It just, it went out there in August. It was debuted by this trucking company in central Minnesota that hauls rocks during the week, but they put all these different themes on their trucks and they created a police memorial one. So that was cool to have that out at the Legion as well.
It was very nice. They also sold shirts there and I think that they were going to be doing another order of shirts that had the officer's names on the back of the shirt that were lost in service here.
All right, and one more while on the topic of police. We had a dedication of the police monument that's outside the Coon Rapids Police Department before our council meeting this week.
Yeah, so former police chief Steve Wells, now council member at large Steve Wells, is part of the Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association. And he kind of spearheaded this, went out and got several sponsors. I'm not going to start naming them because I won't, I won't remember the. But they, they had it, they had the statue carved, they sold bricks. In fact, they're still selling, there's several bricks that are blanked that you can still purchase to participate in that. The funds will go to, I think, Coon Rapids Crime Prevention. Very nice, very nice. And what I was, one of the things they talked about was we've been very fortunate that we've not lost an officer in Coon Rapids. So for this memorial, just to be a dedication to law enforcement in general as the protector, it's very nice that it doesn't have another meaning to it.
Right.
You know, it doesn't have, you know, in memorial of any particular, you know, there's not that sad aspect here yet.
Like the semi we saw at the police appreciation, which was all officers that were killed in the line of duty. These are people that support the police department, still alive, retired, all of that.
Yep, yep, yep. For past, current, and future law enforcement here.
All right, so if you're ever at City Hall, get a chance to check it out. It's right by the main police entrance at City Hall, right outside.
Yep.
All right, well, we're done on the subject of all of that. We will move into our meeting now. We'll talk about our Tuesday, September 20th City Council meeting first. One of the first items there was proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yeah, so Alexandra House provides a lot of services for Anoka County. So we just do a proclamation declaring October Domestic Awareness, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it's just so important that people look for the signs and people be aware that there is help out there.
All right, and their Walk for Hope is coming up here on Saturday, September 24th. So just a couple of days here. They had it last year. They have it annually up at Bunker Hills and that raises money to help support the programs of the Alexandra House.
Yeah, a lot of very large, a lot of sponsors for that, both large and smaller. And it looks like a great event. It's a pre-registration close on the 21st, but you can still register the morning of the walk. And they got a 5K run and then a two-mile walk.
Yeah, so if you don't want to run, you can walk, which is kind of nice to have the both options. I'd like that option.
That would be me.
All right. Council, or the City of Coon Rapids was presented with a Sustainability Practices Award. This is something that was awarded, I believe, at the end of August officially.
It was, so that was actually re-presented, which is apparently different than regifting.
It's okay.
And sustainability is, is so much more than just our recycling center. It's, it's our sustainability commission. It's all of the things that we do as a community to support the, you know, I'm sure they have a new mantra now, but the old recycle, reuse.
Reduce, reuse, recycle?
That was it, yeah. Once you miss that first one, it's hard to go back.
Yeah.
So it was acknowledging the commission and acknowledging all the people that have worked towards that. And I, and this was a statewide works award. And for some reason I can't pull it up here, but that's okay.
It's from the, it's from the American Public Works Association. So it's their Sustainability Practices Award.
Yep, there you go.
If that makes sense. So this was the Minnesota chapter that gave this out. Staff accepted the award at a national public works conference awards ceremony in Minneapolis back on August 29th.
Yeah, so at that awards was city manager Matt Stemwell and public works director Tim Hemmer. And then assistant engineer Mark Hansen actually presented it then at the meeting.
All right. Council adopted a resolution accepting a grant for a full-time DW officer for the coming year.
Full-time DWI officer, yeah. Unfortunately, Anoka County is, I think, second in the state, the chief said, for fatalities right now. And so this is a very important role to help keep everybody safe. Just get out there and it's the full-time DWI officer. We received the funding for him or, but what's nice is if we get into a bind and we need help, it's still an extra officer on the street that can come to assist in another situation. So it's kind of a win-win for us.
All right, and that officer has been Officer Adam Jacobson. I believe we were talking, this may be the second year or thereabouts for this. This was actually something awarded in February of 2015 from the Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety. And the grant was authorized for up to four fiscal years, but it has to be, it's funded one year at a time, so you have to reauthorize it each year.
And I think Adam was the first one for six months and then it's a six-month rotating one. So then they appoint a different officer for the next six months. It's, I think it's kind of a high burnout job because you're always kind of on your own and you're always just dealing with drunks.
Well, right, and you're processing arrests and, you know, it's actually interesting because if you've never seen the process, it takes a while to process a DWI arrest and you might only get three in a whole shift or four, just because it takes all that time to process. So.
Plus you're in court a lot then because everybody, you know, so many will then fight it in court. So it's just, it's a very intense job. So six months, then they roll into the next officer.
All right, so that'll be again in 2017, we will have a full-time DWI officer. And I know they patrol, as the chief mentioned, Highway 10 is a big target.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know, yes.
It's a main thoroughfare. There's a lot of.
There's really little I can add to that.
Well, I mean, if you've driven down Highway 10, I think you know cops sit around the Creek Meadow Bridge there on, anywhere between there and Egrit.
Creek Meadow Bridge.
Maybe I'm not supposed to say that, I don't know. I do see them sitting there a lot. So I imagine at night around, you know, 1:00 or 2:00 AM, they probably can snag a drunk or two there.
I would imagine.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, we all, we all see that one car where you go, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, all right. Council considered adopting a resolution, did in fact adopt a resolution establishing a housing improvement fee. This is for Creek Meadow Two Owners Association.
Yeah, and in fact, this is actually an association that's basically next to City Hall. It's within a block of City Hall. And I think it was 44 units. And what happens is these homeowners associations get set up for the townhomes or the townhome associations. And people pay a monthly fee that covers their, you know, maybe their hazard insurance or outside maintenance or trash, things like that. And then you need to also set up your reserve accounts. You need to set those reserve funds for when you need a roof, when you need siding, garage doors. And if you don't have enough in your reserve accounts, if you haven't anticipated enough, you could be in a bind because now you've got 44 individual homeowners that all need to have siding replaced and you don't have the reserves and it's, you're not going to have 44 people that can all write a check at the same time to cover their outside maintenance. So the state allows us, or allows them, to set up a housing district. The city has to work with them because we actually have to establish it here. And then the funding all comes through the city, but because we have assessing authority. So it works out nice. In this case, it's a significant amount. It's like $23,000, $23,000 per unit to completely fix them up. So it's a win-win for the city. They're going to be, it's a big increase in housing stock, make them look very nice. And, and it's a win for them because then they can pay for it at a low interest rate with their assessments over the next 10 years.
Yeah, so it gives them time to still pay it off without expecting to drop that chunk of change all at once.
Yeah, it's still, it's still a very large, it's a large chunk of money. And that's the, the only little bit of pushback that was. Most of the residents there support this. Most of the owners support this. In sheer numbers, the talk to us, I would say, you know, over 90% because there was very little pushback and it was just over the amount because it's a lot of money.
And again, they still have the right, the homeowners as a whole, to accept it or reject it. Just by the city approving this doesn't mean.
The city doesn't drive any of this, right. The city facilitates it and if, so let's see. So right now, I think we're at a point where, at any point, if 45% of the people said, we don't want this, then it's done. Or if 55% of the people write in that, yes, we do want this and we want to waive the 45 days because that's the window of time we're in right now, is a 45-day holding period. And if we get, if we hear from more than 55% that we just want to go ahead with this and waive the 45 days, then they can start the construction right away.
Okay, all right. Council adopted an ordinance, two of them actually, one a zoning change, actually both zoning changes. This is for Spirit of Grace Church at 10110 Woodcrest Drive.
Yeah, if, if you're familiar with it, it's kind of over there near Wintercrest Baseball Park and Knox Hill across the street from home. And they, I think they want to do some expansions and right now it's zoned, high-density residential. Changing the zoning to office allows them to kind of do those expansions. In the long run, I think that that's a better fit for that area if they do go away. I mean, I'm sorry, if, if anything ever happened where the church were to leave, that makes more sense for that to be office.
Okay, so that was, it was a land use change and a zoning change.
Yeah, you always have, you always have to change both so that everything lines up over in the, on paper.
All right, and we also had a zone change and a land use change to general commercial. This is for three properties on Coon Rapids Boulevard. These are all in the 2400 block of Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Yeah, it's right, it's the, it's the two buildings, three properties just immediately east of the Pizza Hut there on Coon Rapids Boulevard. And the old 2437 used to be the Century 21 Borden Building. And then it's been a mortgage company and I think now there's a CPA in there. And then the next building over is open as a furniture store and it's been several different things. But they've had to operate under a conditional use permit there. So if we just change the, change the zoning to all general commercial, then they all fit and it just makes more sense.
All right. We also had two ordinances that were adopted. These are both relating to parking restrictions on streets near Mercy Hospital.
Yeah, so Dakota Street is the street immediately west of Mercy and that one will be no parking on both sides of the street. With all of the expansion of the hospital and that's the entrance for the emergencies, for the, for emergency, just to make sure there's room for emergency vehicles, there's no parking on both sides of that one. The next street over is Eldorado Street. For the first 700 feet, it's just apartment buildings and then you get down to the single-family homes. Some of the single-family residents apparently were complaining about cars stacking up on the end of the street, maybe parking to jump on the bus. So it was introduced as parking on both sides, but we made a compromise based on a request of the owner of all of the buildings on that first 700 feet was, how about just one side? Because you're really, I don't see this problem. You know, you're, you're got a solution here for a problem that I'm not aware of, you know? And I've driven by their lot, every time I drive by there, I'm looking for cars and I'm never seeing any cars there. So Councilman Johnson amended the motion and it passed as it was amended to parking is prohibited on the west side. And so you can still park on the east side.
All right. Council adopted a resolution amending the budget for two police projects and this will be paid out of forfeiture funds that the apartment gets, correct?
Right, so forfeiture funds can only be used for certain projects. These fit within that. One is for adding a, a new training room over in the public works garage. When police are, are training in their hand-to-hand and their defensive tactics, they can't be armed. So we have to have them in a spot that's secure so they, so that they don't become the victims. So this is, this will be in the public works garage. It'll be an expansion of the current forfeiture garage, sealing it, making it, adapting it so that it'll be suitable for the, the training. And then it's also money for the, it's.
Emergency Operations Center?
Emergency Operations Center, which is currently their training room and upgrading it and getting a new TV in there and kind of bringing it up to the, up to date a little bit.
And some other technology costs, phones, yeah, interactive monitors, projection equipment. So both projects totaling about $100,000. And again, that money coming from forfeiture funds.
Right, Councilmember Wells remembered back when he was police chief that he was hoping they were going to update the outlets a little bit because during the Y2K crisis, they blew them out with all the crock pots in there.
Well, hopefully that's not anything we need to worry about in the near distant future anyways.
Funny anecdote, anyway.
All right, Council approved proposal for engineering services for the 2017 sanitary sewer lining program. I feel like we keep talking about this and we keep saying it's going to end and now it is finally going to end?
That's what they say.
Okay.
So it was my understanding that this was our last year and then we were going to film the remaining or video it and that the rest of it, because it's all newer, should be good for maybe another eight or 10 years, but we weren't going to do that until it was ready. And now they started videoing and as they were videoing, they did find tree ruts that were intruding. They found some, some swells, you know, where the little sags are. So they felt that actually about 65% of it really needs to be lined. Well, instead of then waiting 10 years and wondering when to do the 35%, they're just proposing to do all of the remaining lines and then will be done. Then all of the clay tile sanitary sewer in town will have the nice, you know, the nice lining downs. It's effectively turns it into a, almost like a PVC or a fiberglass lined pipe. And then we should be done. And I've mentioned this before, when they've gone back, they started this process out on the East Coast in the 70s. And when they've gone back and looked in these lines, they still look like new. So this should be a permanent fix. And once we finish, then we'll be done spending a million dollars a year or whatever it is, whatever it's going to be this year for fixing.
Excuse me?
Nope, no problem, for fixing these lines.
So it's not like seal coating where you have to go back and do it every so. This is supposed to be a permanent solution.
Yep, yep, so yeah, they actually, they literally go inside of the clay tile pipes and they create a new lining that creates a new pipe inside of it. So it.
It's a cool process.
It's very cool and more than 50 years and, you know, like I say, they're still like new, so.
All right, well, that is all the items we have from our meeting on September 20th, that was, correct? We're going to move back to our first meeting of September. That happened on September 6th. We have a couple of items to talk about there. One of the first being approving a service agreement with the Alexandra House. We just talked about that at our current meeting.
Yeah, so the Alexandra House has created a lot of different tools that our law enforcement officer uses, that are, that assist our city attorney. And it's a, it's a quantifiable service. It's a service where we can say, this saves us thousands of dollars a year. So from that, so this was grant, giving them a grant of $10,000 for those services. Whether that's exactly the right amount, we can easily quantify up to that amount. And I think that they can probably even find more justification, but this was for $10,000.
All right. Council approved contracts for school liaison officers for schools in District 11.
Right, so we, we've got liaison officers and the first one was for the, what do they call the school now?
River Trail Learning Center.
River Trail Learning Center. See, yeah, it's still L.O. Jacob in my mind.
Yeah.
So it's an agreement with, with, that was a separate agreement. And then there was an agreement with the, for the Coon Rapids Middle School, Coon Rapids High School, Northdale Middle School. I think, was that all of the other ones, I believe? But it's basically the school district reimburses us for the cost of law enforcement officers to work in the schools as the liaison officers. It's part of, it includes the DARE program and, you know, several other things.
And it's obviously a successful program where they wouldn't keep renewing this. It must provide some service to the school and the students.
And it does, yeah. And it's one of those things where actually there's, there's more that we could do that would probably be beneficial, but time is such a premium in those schools. You know, we do the, like, the fifth grade DARE program. There's actually a middle school DARE program as well. We just can't get the time. They can't find the time for us to go in and do that training.
Yeah, and there's so many more classes that students are taking these days, so.
Yeah, but in the, the side benefit and, or it's probably part of the planned benefit, is I love that the, the students get to know our officers. You know, it, these are, these are good guys, you know? And for them to be able to get to know them as a person, it makes it harder for them to generalize them as they see them displayed in the unfortunate memes and stuff on social media.
Yeah, and this is something that's been going on since 1974, the school liaison program here, I imagine. So 42 years or so, quite a bit of history.
Okay, I'm not going to try and do math that quick in my head, but that sounds about right.
I know my age, so I can do that pretty quick. We won't say what that is.
Okay.
All right, moving right along, we had adoption of ordinance. We had, again, several parking restrictions that were adopted on several different roadways in Coon Rapids.
Yeah, so the, the one of these that probably took the most work was the frontage road on Crooked Lake Boulevard between 121st and whatever the next street is. It's basically a cross that's on the west side of Crooked Lake Boulevard from Morrisby Elementary. And what happens is there's a piece of frontage road there that just fills with cars. Whenever there's a big event at the school or a sporting event out on the field or something, all of a sudden that street just becomes plugged. Our emergency vehicles can't go down it. There's, you know, it's just, it becomes, it becomes hazardous. So through several communications with the neighbors, figured out we'll make it no parking on one side and which side should it be? And it's actually going to be all no parking on the east side, right? Yes, no parking on the east side. So the parking that remains will be on the west side and only in front of the homes then. Otherwise, you end up with cars on the other side from the driveways and it's, it just gets, it's still a mess. So, yeah, no parking on the west, on the east side of the frontage road.
Okay, and then our other one was 114th Avenue and Magnolia Street.
Yeah, and that was near the, the old Soderbergh Elementary School there. You know, it's just, it gets a little constricted on that corner. And the, and that one, again, there was some modifications made with, based on the neighbors' feedback. I think that that one was just during the school year. I don't recall now exactly what that was.
And then 105th Lane and Kumquat Street.
Yep, and there was no feedback from any of the neighbors on that one. It was just adopted. It just gets too tight in there for snowplows and for emergency vehicles.
And I imagine these are posted, no parking, there's signs, right?
Oh, yeah, it's to be enforceable.
Watch for the signs.
Yeah, it's, it's not like you have to remember these.
In case you don't remember everything said here today. All right. Council adopted the preliminary 2017 tax levy and budget. We're to that point again already.
We are, and you have to establish an amount that's basically your not-to-exceed amount. And that, that dollar amount ended up to be $25,613,000 and reflects about just slightly less than a 3% increase over last year's. It's, it's an, it's just, it becomes this inevitable thing when most of your budget is staff expenses, you know, and you've got cost of living raises that go in there. Well, what do you want to cut out? You know, what, which of your services that you were provided last year, don't you want next year? So 2.97, less than 3%, hopefully it's, it seemed it was acceptable to the council and staff worked very hard to get to that number, so that's where we're at.
All right, so basically a status quo budget for the most part, not anything major new next year that wasn't in this year's budget.
Right, right, yeah, nothing, nothing big.
Projects change and all of that always do, but nothing.
Yep, yeah, I mean, we've still got like $2.5 million for capital projects next year, but, you know, just different projects.
All right. Council had several resolutions that were adopted. This is regarding No Canipans, I don't want to say their garage, but 11301 Dogwood Street near Northdale Middle School, they're going to construct a garage.
Sure, so the school district used to operate out of the building on Hanson Boulevard and 113th Avenue. And behind that, they had their, their garage, their maintenance garage. They sold, they, they moved their offices into Anoka to the old Sandburg School, I think it was. And then they maintained use of the garage here for a time. And now they're building a new garage over behind the Northdale Middle School. But they realized that we've had over 25 years of property lines that are in the wrong spot over there. So this really allowed the city to work with them to clean up all of the property lines, to get Northdale Middle School onto their own parcel, Eisenhower Elementary onto their own parcel, get our well, our well buildings onto the right parcels. So it wasn't really any pushback on the garage. It was just a lot of rezoning or redrawing lines. And now we've got to reestablish all the right easements and things. It was a very convoluted process, but it's just to clean up that whole area.
All right, and I imagine they'll be getting going as soon as they're able to with their actual garage. I don't know, have we seen plans for that yet? Because this is still the final plat approval. I don't recall.
You know, I think I've seen a sketch, but I don't recall if I saw that because I saw the architect at another meeting or if it was an official meeting.
Okay, but there's still some approvals yet to do before they begin construction on this.
I think so. I think so. You're testing my memory and that's, I'll fail that test every time.
I'm thinking we haven't seen that, so that's still more to come there.
Yeah, but it's so funny because there were so many pages, there's so many things here and there will be no obvious difference to anybody because you don't physically get out and move any lines, it's all just on paper.
Yeah, but you'll eventually see a new building.
Eventually you'll see a new building. Eventually, you'll see a new building back there, yep.
All right, well, just like that, we are out of time.
Nice.
Thank you for being here today, Jerry. Thank you at home for watching and we'll see you back here again after our two meetings in October.
Thank you.